He has to drive down here.
My family worked in there. Well, he was working at Karma. That was one way he lived.
He was also with the fairytale. He's moving further than fairytale.
Yeah.
Yes. No, no, no.
Yeah, it's still worth saving.
Yes. That the record reflects the action that we've taken. The result of this executive session at this time. All right, I'd like to call order, council meeting, one day, June 13, 2016, at 7:00 PM. We will be prayer Reverend Diana Thompson, Chief Shepherd of the Church, for our president.
Thank you, Council Presidents, members of the Council, Directors of North Canton. It is my honor and pleasure to be here today. And I'd like to read from you Paul's second letter to the Colossians. "Blessed be the God and Father our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of mercy and the God of all consolation, who consoles us all in our afflictions, so that we may be able to console those who are in any affliction with the consolation we ourselves have been consoled by God. And I know many of us come with thoughts about the terror attacks in Orlando and as officers and caretakers of a community, I imagine that that burden feels heavy for you as well. So please hear these words of blessing for you and your work. Let us pray. God, who have called these men and women to serve in North Canton, Ohio. We thank you for their willingness to do this work on behalf of so many people. Bless them and guide them. Give them the courage and strength to make hard decisions. We ask that you hear all our prayers and answer them in your love and mercy. Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quickly, go. Here? Here?
Here.
Here?
Here.
Thank you. May I have a motion and second to excuse Reverend Griffith and Surratt? So move.
Second.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Keithley?
Yes.
Yes.
Lanning?
Yes.
Yes.
By yes to excuse Council members, whether in council or state.
All right, thank you. Now, may I have a motion and second to approve as presented? Mayor's Court receipts, April 2016. Mayor's Court receipts, May 2016. Council meeting minutes, May 23, 2016. Special Council meeting minutes, June 6, 2016. Motion to approve as presented?
Second.
Keithley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Lanning?
Yes.
Foles?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
By yes to approve the listed minutes and reports.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion and second to amend the agenda to include five B ordinance number 32-16 to remove from the table? So move.
Second.
Peters?
Yes.
Lanning?
Yes.
Foles?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Upstate.
Or yes, one C.
Thank you very much. And did everyone vote?
You didn't. Yes. Sorry.
Okay, so four yes, Fontaine?
Yes.
Thank you. To remove from the table now, may I have a motion and a second to read ordinance number 32-16? Second.
Peters?
No.
Lanning?
No.
Foles?
No.
Fontaine?
Same.
Keithley?
No.
Or no, one C to remove from the table.
All right, thank you. Before we start, recognition of visitors. Basically, what we've done there by not reading it a third time, the CRA ordinance as presented, as we've been talking about on Gilbert's, I start from scratch. You know, we utilized a steel-down version of the CRA for the city now. And, you know, limited, limited results as of yet. By expanding the CRA, you know, we can philosophically argue pros and cons. And we've heard the cons from you. We've talked about the pros up here. More importantly, we had a meeting with the school board, the superintendent. And they could not get on board with this. They felt that it was going to be unfair to them and their finances and a possible levy, valid issue, whatever that may be. And, you know, this council, we use tools that are given to us just through the state legislature, you know, to try to nurture and attract business to this community and make, make this community better for, for all of us. The fact that the school board is against it, you know, if we move forward on it, all we would be doing is dividing the community. And that is not what this council intends. And, and that, quite frankly, is why it was tabled prior to public space last week. Because we had our, had that meeting, the school board. And we had concerns and we wanted to, to look at it a little closer. So we go back to the drawing board. You know, there's other tools that we can use. Most importantly, we, you know, we're not going to divide this community over an issue such as this. There are other things that we can do to attract and retain business. So with that being said, at this time, if you wish to address counsel, please step forward. State your name and address. Mr. Name?
I'm with the 509 Southern Southeast. Before I do make any comments, I want you to know until this morning, I was in the House of Castles. I reside today, so that any remarks I make on the merits of the CRA or its structure would not make it self-serving or really seem to be in defense of any previous actions taken. And in light of your comments tonight, as you perform, hopefully you can take some of my thoughts and take them to heart. I personally, along with the Jeepers Commerce and the North Canton Community Growth Association, support the concept of CRA as a tool, as you indicated. Help stabilize neighborhoods and make the community more attractive to younger families with different housing needs than the generations before them. Two bathrooms, bigger garages, and family space are biding. Many of our older homes don't offer these amenities. IRG says there's an abundance of interest in the Hoover District apartments. Some older residents love our city, they want to stay here, but they are pretty close to being done with shoveling snow, breaking leaves, and doing home repairs. And I can tell you, calls that we've received ever since the first signs went up across the street at the Chamber have been predominantly from older residents who love to stay in town and move over there. So as those current properties become available, the hope we have is for younger families to occupy them, families with children to attend their schools, to energize the neighborhoods. And if the current residents or new owners needed to remodel to suit their needs, CRA is a tool they could make the difference in deciding where to live. And while our school systems are poor, go maybe a few hundred dollars here and there on a project, it's really a remodeling project. Remember that thousands of dollars could come into those schools with recent developments. That's something to keep in mind. Just a couple of suggestions, as I've been following the debate. If new construction is ever included, or if it's deemed that the current ordinance does need acceptance, you might want to consider capping the availability to a certain level. One that would encourage building to increase surrounding home values without unfairly affecting neighbors. Also, you could consider destruction, perhaps the apartment building could receive a lower availability than a new home. And you could consider where the new construction is being built. One vacant lot in the neighborhood is much different than the new housing lot now altogether. And I think lost in the discussions are the parameters of the CRA. Not everybody in my little repair project qualified. You're assuming when you buy a home, when you live in a home, you're going to have a good roof, you're going to have good windows, you're going to have good doors. They're assumed to be a part of any structure or repairs again, and you need to be made periodically, but those are not qualified for this. What qualifies are changes to the property that increase the value of use. And I don't believe that's communicated as well, so people understand that this is not paving the way for the city to become a giant apartment complex. And I also suggest to talk not only more against these local campaigns, but also with plain touch, plain look, because as Mr. Wern knows, Mr. Peters knows, a good portion of our city lives in that plain district. And they should be included in the conversations you should have. So those are some suggestions from your side of the debate. Now, when I'm free and clear of the house, and maybe I'm very happy to help if you guys want to put together an ad hoc community of business people and residents, just to see if there's someone across the country. So, thank you.
Doc, what community did you say you have?
The Houses.
Houses? Okay, good to hear that, thank you.
Yeah, I've been on the, I don't know, Mayor Waddes six years? Something like that. It's been a long time.
And I appreciate your, your service on the panel.
Well, absolutely. I just don't want anybody to put any ulterior motives in my comments, but when you look at this thing, it's been around since 1999.
Right.
And even in the current form, there's only about four properties that are involved. Four out of only three. So this is not something that has been a windfall for either a major loss for the school district to work for, you know, to bring in, but as new families do come in, and these older homes need to be remodeled, it's a good tool for us to use. And if and when this ordinance does get finally wrapped up, if it does, the Chamber and the Growth Association, we have to put on some kind of workshop where we can bring in Mr. Bowles and Mr. Fox and some of the lenders to talk a little bit about the opportunities that exist out there. Somebody's seen on the fence, right? So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I agree. A point of clarification. And I've been involved in every one of these discussions. I can count on probably two to three hands, fifteen times or so, that we have mentioned that windows and that type of thing. We were very clear on what the CRA included and didn't include. And, you know, so we did many, many, a, 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 very clear. And windows, stuff like that, cars, roofs, didn't count. Okay. Anyone else who should address counsel, please step forward. State your name and address.
Larry Tripp, 1027 East Maple. First of all, I'd like to thank all of those that spoke last Monday evening, June 6, whether you spoke in favor or against the CRA program, or whatever your topic may have been. Please be thankful this country of ours affords us many constitutional freedoms, including the freedom of speech. Tomorrow, as we probably fly and display the United States flag, take one moment to remember those who gave their ultimate and those serving today that we may enjoy our many freedoms. As many of you know, this city has a common problem with the dogwood pool, hopefully not scheduled in June 2016. My understanding is that the main problem is of an electrical nature. I am somewhat livid, and I would be much more so if I were a parent of children using the pool. Did this electrical problem just come pop up because of recent construction? Or is there the possibility this pool has been operated in a unsafe environment for a period of a few years? I look for updates on the pool on a daily basis from the Canton repository, North Canton City, and YMCA websites, but to no avail for information on the pool. One would certainly think the city would want to keep their citizens aware of progress being made as to the opening date. After all, isn't that what a website is for? And I also thought, under our new council leadership, transparency was going to be a key word. I last read that there were going to be refunds and/or adjustments to those already purchasing specie passes. So may I make a suggestion that may appease some? If the pool were to open soon, by maybe the end of the week, offer free swimming to North Canton and North Canton citizens through the end of June. Repay on those North Canton citizens already purchasing specie passes, one-third of their purchase price. Then commence July, first offering two months specie passes, with the expectation of the pool remaining up through Labor Day. Sure, there would be some administrative problems, but it seems like council handles everything else on an emergency basis. Why not this? What do it provide publicity? What a way for North Canton citizens to enjoy their 100,000-plus lectures? Maybe even new people enjoying the pool? Lastly, after Monday committee, Mr. Fontaine, Councilman Ward, approached me and asked, and I quote, "Why don't you like Jeff?" That question set me back for a minute, and I did think about it when I got home. I realized after thinking about it, there is a difference between like and respect. I said, "Not liking a person would be if I passed them off as they were in some kind of trouble, like auto problems, et cetera." Surely, I would stop to help anyone on this council, including Jeff, if they were encountering any type of a problem. So I guess I don't quite understand the word like, as you asked. Now, if you ask me why I don't respect Jeff on North Canton issues, that's a different story, and we would still be talking. So, Mr. Fontaine, that leads me into my final remarks. That's exactly the mentality that exists within these Chamber walls. If anybody speaks out against any council-proposed legislation, they immediately become an enemy of council members. Explain that to me if you can. One only has to read Mervyn Olson's Stark County political report, in particular, his last three blogs on North Canton government. His reports are much more articulate in his expressing local government at its worst than I could ever hope to speak. I hope, Mr. Fontaine, I've answered your questions from last week. Thank you. And by the way, for crews of the city retaining 250 jobs, just, that was recently posted. Good news. So, yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Sir, before, before you come up, I want to make a few comments. Just give you one second, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I certainly appreciate, uh, remember Fontaine looking out for me, asking why someone is like it? I appreciate it. Larry, I don't, I don't know why you don't respect me. You, you say that if you have an opposing view of this council, you're immediately an enemy. I don't understand that. I don't get that. I've never, I've never shown that, that you were an enemy of mine. I've always treated you with the utmost respect. Now, if you could point out one time where I, where I have not treated you with respect, please let me know after, after the council meeting. I'd love to hear.
Is this a good or take?
No, it is not. I didn't interrupt you. So, in your comments, so I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and comment now.
Sure.
You're disrespecting the process here.
I'd like.
There, I don't, I don't understand. I mean, you, you know, you yelled from the back of the room. You showed me disrespect in running the meeting. And this is a prime example. I mean, you have a problem with, with my opposing view of you. I don't get it. I don't understand it. You know, there are other folks in this room that give an opposing view to this council and are not treated in a disrespectful manner. In the only role, we've disagreed on many things, but she's calling on the phone. We've had the conversation. We've agreed to disagree. So I, I don't get it. And I don't understand. You stand back there, you're gyrating, you're laughing, you're making faces. Sir, I mean, that's unbelievable, that a grown man acts like that. I've only shown you respect, and you've only shown me disrespect. And the opinion blogger, the Lake County opinion blogger that represents Martin Olson, not Mervyn Olson. And he is an opinion blogger, an out-of-state, out-of-town opinion blogger. It's his opinion. And his opinion of us is very low. We all know where that comes from. We all know why that is. That's it. Sir, Jesse, I apologize. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good day to councilman, Reverend Ronald Jesse. I'm 1005 Little Avenue, Southwest, North Canton, Ohio. Excuse me. I know you've been very gracious to this council in the past about the, the, the base. And I didn't even come here to talk about that tonight. I agree with that. I was going to tell you, but I keep my fight going and all this kind of stuff. I wasn't going to talk about you and pick that during the draw, and so I got that. I really came tonight to provide some information or some suggestions to you. And these are only suggestions. Possibly some of the council members, somebody can give back what they know here, kind of, you know, it's a better idea, if you're something that we've done. I would appreciate that very much. My first thing, my first thing I want to bring up, these are only suggestions to council. Yes. We all, we all know that Leonard Street, particularly Park Street, can deal with because of the traffic and the speed and all that. So, up on the corner, I've noticed new bush tires every day. And I say new bush tires for, for three stop signs, never split them. My suggestion to you would be to put up another stop sign opposite to one, sorry, there. That one's that one on the right, that one on the left. Because if you're traveling at a pretty good rate of speed, and you can zip right through that stop sign, you're going to see one on the other side. Just got to tell you to stop. That's my suggestion. The other suggestion I have is North Canton, North Canton deals with an enormous amount of noise. We need to control the noise, I believe. You know, typically motorcycles are like any of my ideas are. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm playing this stuff. Dogs go crazy, babies park. You can't get the rest of it just rattled. The actual windows of my stuff actually rattle from motorcycles. State statue has a lot of issues concerning no mufflers, you know, motorcycle spikes, particularly motorcycles. What they do is they either remove the mufflers altogether, or they call, they call, they call, sorry, cut the bathrooms out, and they're really loud. And I think everybody in council is agreefully saying that two hundred and thirty motorcycles will change, and they're unbelievable, especially when they come to the stop signs. They rev up like elk, and they make as much as noise as possible. My idea is this. My idea is the council set a decimal limit on noise. You provide the patrolmen with a decimal meter. They're very, very inexpensive. And I'm going to use just some rough facts, but I don't think about decimals. So let's say the ordinance says, if you're over a hundred decimals, he hears loud noises, he stops it, he can take his meter out and read his meter. That's the council sets, whatever they want to say, they set a ruling of a hundred to 150 decimals, you get a warning. Over 150 decimals, maybe you get a ticket. But it's, it's really important to keep this community nice as far as the noise, the noise control in this, in this, talking what I'm talking about here. Motorcycles are the main culprit, what I'm talking about. And like I said, there's statues on the books about mufflers and the noise they can make. So patrolman stops a motorcycle, he hears a decimal. There we are. This way over, you're in a ticket. And I'm not going to play motorcycles, because I had one, I'll tell you. Mine was all factory, you know. A lot of motorcycle riders don't have endorsements. You don't have a license to drive a motorcycle. No. You know, it's not a big, big scale, but there's plenty of them. A lot of them don't have insurance. And they don't, that one will last a small, but it'd have a motorcycle, they're arrested. So if the patrolman has a good reason to stop you, because he hears a racing noise coming out of his machine, he may find other things involved, or drugs, whatever. I see my timing wrong. I'd like to come back on the council at a different time, and I have other suggestions I would like to tell you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Ron. Welcome back anytime. And, and I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'd like to say something to you. You can, you can have a seat.
Okay.
I wanted to, I wanted to address it real quick.
Thank you.
You know, to the, to the previous speaker, mention that, you know, when anyone has an opposing view, that they're instantly an enemy. Mr. Jesse, you were as hard on me as anyone, well, anyone could be during that war meeting. You know, and, and I appreciated what you had to say. I heard what you had to say. And then, let me tell you this. And this relates to the CRA. I know you didn't want to talk about it, but I will.
Okay.
After our conversation with the school, I think it pretty much solidified us that, that we weren't going to divide the community, we're going to go forward. But the comments that you made to me about sitting on your patio and looking across the street and seeing kids running around, and, and, you know, that you were going to be paying for them to go to school and their parents weren't, that, that hit home. Okay? I understood that argument. And I understood that, that any debate that did happen would have to be made up elsewhere. So this council listened to that. We, we really, truly did. Now, we were kind of underseeded a little bit, so maybe we were back on our heels. Maybe we didn't answer as well, or give the same response that, that some people thought we should have, but we were listening to you, and I appreciate everything you said.
Can I say something real quick?
Well, let's, let's, let's continue on. We'll talk after the meeting, but I just, I wanted to thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right. Anyone else who wants to address counsel, please step forward. State your name and address.
Judy Longer, and I live at 265, Fordville Street, Southwest. And I too would like to address the traffic and noise issue at the intersection of Glenwood Southwest and Ludon. I feel that this intersection is a means to get to Main Street from my home on Fordville Southwest in order to avoid turning left out of my own street. It is rare to ever be the only car at this intersection, but a couple weeks ago, I found that I was for a brief moment. I remained stopped as a car approached from the east, as I want to do, because I don't trust anybody. And I was stunned and then livid when the driver not only never slowed, but continued through the stop, only coming to a stop, and I laid on the ground. I saw no look of surprise or apology. She then cleared the intersection. I did email the chief without my concern. Then last week, I was visiting Mr. Jesse at his home at this same intersection about 4:00 PM, really the peak traffic time during an already steady traffic day. When he went to the house for a few minutes, I diverted my complete attention to the traffic and witnessed about ten cars traveling east and west, none of which came to a complete stop, and about three that literally ran the stop sign. No traffic north and south made all this very convenient for these drivers. I also noticed that the chief had installed a speed monitor on Glenwood, which I realize analyzes speeds, but I don't know if it can tell how many abused the stop signs. Installing a traffic light would probably help, except that the neighborhood would suffer even more for the increased length of noises we already experienced. Cars would just back up, you know, many cars, waiting for the light with their radios blaring excessively and the motorcycles revving their engines, and people living nearby unable to get out of their driveway or in it. Prior to moving to North Canton, thirty-four years ago, I resided in Summit County, and like most residents there, I became aware and conditioned to automatically reduce my driving speed when going through gravel falls and stow and hang. This habit still persists when I occasionally drive up that way. The reason being that the police are and have been for decades notorious for regularly monitoring traffic and issuing copious speeding tickets. And since moving to North Canton, I've learned to also be very cautious when passing Price Park. That said, with seven new large homes going in at Summit Place adding to the already main street-like traffic and noise that exists there, we can only expect more driveways, children, and/or pets chasing balls or squirrels into the busy Glenwood, not to mention virtually little or no parking for their guests. These future issues can certainly be anticipated and dealt with now rather than later, when there will be seven more angry households and possibly even tragic traffic events. I would like to see our police department aggressively monitor this area for as much time as possible and for as long as possible, often on until North Canton sends a message to drivers that we are not going to stand for this abuse to our streets and our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Anyone else wish to address council? Please step forward, state your name and address. Last call? Okay. Move on to full business. We're gonna have a motion and a second. Read by title only, first reading of resolution number three dash sixty. So...
Yes.
Yes.
Fontaine. Keesley. Peters. By yes, to adopt resolution three thousand sixteen.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance number forty-one dash sixty? So move.
I moved it out, I feel like we've talked about this a lot.
Second.
The Southwood tree, we are sitting free.
Yes.
Fontaine. Keesley. Peters.
Yes.
By yes, to adopt resolution three thousand sixteen.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance number forty-one dash sixty?
So move.
Second.
Fontaine. Keesley. Peters. Larry. And Foles. By yes, to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance number forty-one, two thousand sixteen, and ordinance authorizing director administration of the city of North Canton, direct has empty beds according to specification, now on file in the director's office and authorizing emergency in North Canton upon board of control of legal to enter entry agreement for the collection of residential garbage, garbage recyclable in yard waste in the city of North Canton for a three-year period commencing July fourth, two thousand sixteen, and terminated June thirty, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. As the chairman and vice chairman are not here this evening, Director Grimes, who will be managing this contract, I'm gonna speak to some of the folks that are in attendance and probably not know what this is about.
We've had a three-year, our various contractors coming up at the end of this month, and we need to rebid that out according to the way the bid specs were written, and we're asking permission to do that and see if they'll have, so...
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions? See none, entertain, motion and a second to adopt the second reading of ordinance number forty-one dash sixteen.
Second.
Keesley. Peters. Larry. Foles. Fontaine. By yes, to adopt the second reading of ordinance number forty-one, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you very much. On a new business, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number forty-two dash sixteen?
So move.
Peters. Larry. Foles. Fontaine. Keesley. By yes, to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number forty-two, two thousand sixteen, and ordinance accepting the traffic flag for the sanctuary number three, North Canton, within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Thank you. Chairman Fontaine, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Rich Haskins was here last week, and he talked a bit about the sanctuary lots. There's actually twenty-eight lots in the new section we're doing. And all we're really doing, and it was already approved, we just wanna get the first reading approved for the street names, utilities, and, you know, accepting of that. And I really would approve that in first reading.
Second.
Larry. Foles.
Yes.
Fontaine. Keesley. Peters. By yes, to adopt the first reading of ordinance number forty-two, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number forty-three dash...
So move.
Second. Yes.
Fontaine. Keesley. Peters. And Larry. By yes, to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number forty-three, two thousand sixteen, and ordinance approving, confirming, and accepting of perpetual collective utility easement, number is parcel number nine two zero two three five nine, and being part of lot number two four seven zero, by between the city of North Canton and Altria Municipal Corporation, and the Tricia B. Holder, and the claim the same to be in emergency.
Thank you.
This is where Price Park is, on the east side of the pond. We're replacing the concrete drain area four hundred feet long off the east side, and this is just a perpetual agreement and the claim staying to be in emergency, depending on the first reading. And it's a seven-by-four pipe, or it's a rectangular cement drain is great. Anything, any questions? Okay, I'm gonna read the first reading on ordinance.
Second.
Fontaine. Keesley. Peters. Larry. And Foles.
Yes.
By yes, to adopt the first reading of ordinance number forty-three, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to suspend rules of council for three readings for ordinance number forty-three dash...
So move. Second.
Keesley. Peters. Larry. Foles.
Yes.
Fontaine. By yes, to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number forty-three, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of rules, ordinance number forty-three dash sixty?
So move.
Second.
Peters. Larry. Foles. Fontaine. Keesley. By yes, to adopt and the suspension of rules for ordinance number forty-three, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number forty-four dash sixteen?
So move. Second.
Peters.
Yes.
Larry. Foles.
Yes.
Fontaine. Keesley. By yes, to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number forty-four, two thousand sixteen, and ordinance approving, confirming, and accepting of perpetual collective easement, number is parcel number nine two zero six three eight four, being part of lot number two four seven one, by between the city of North Canton and Altria Municipal Corporation, Charles Turner, Leonard Torre, and the claim the same to be in emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Fontaine.
This is a continuation. It's just the parcel next to it, on the east side of the pond. We're just looking to get the perpetual utilities then approved on first reading.
I have a motion.
I have a motion. I'd like to move to get that.
Second.
Larry. Foles.
Yes.
Fontaine. Keesley. Peters. By yes, to adopt the first reading of ordinance number forty-four, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number forty-four dash sixty? So move.
Second.
Foles.
Yes.
Fontaine. Keesley.
Yes.
Peters. By yes, to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number forty-four, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules, ordinance number forty-four dash sixty? Second.
Fontaine. Keesley. Peters. Larry. And Foles.
Yes.
Seven, by yes, to adopt under suspension of rules for ordinance number forty-four, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number forty-five dash sixty? So move.
Second.
Keesley. Peters. Larry. Foles. And Fontaine. By yes, to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number forty-five, two thousand sixteen, and ordinance repealing any pricing ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand thirteen, establishing rates and policy for rental by the North Canton Civic Center and Cesebo, repeal any and all legislation passed previously, and consistent with this ordinance, and the claim the same to be in emergency.
Chairman Griffith is not here, but he handed over to our partner.
Thank you. I was looking for my media reports.
I was looking for my...
But anyway, in a nutshell, we talked about it during the part of our meetings and discussed on the floor. We're gonna start writing chairs as a new policy, which I think is very beneficial to weddings and other public gatherings there, and also gonna extend the, kind of, lunching now, right, to one o'clock. So if businesses come in and rent the facility, they have like a business launch, it'll extend for that extra hour, I think that's more listen. With that, I make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Peters. Larry. Foles. Fontaine. Keesley. By yes, to adopt the first reading of ordinance number forty-five, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number forty-five dash sixty? So move.
Second.
Larry. Foles. Fontaine. Keesley. And Peters. By yes, to adopt under suspension of rules, three readings for ordinance number forty-five, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of rules, ordinance number forty-five dash sixty? So move.
Second.
Foles. Fontaine. Keesley. Peters. And Larry. By yes, to adopt and the suspension of rules for ordinance number forty-five, two thousand sixteen.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number forty-six dash sixteen?
So move.
Two seconds.
Yes, sir.
Fontaine. Keesley. Peters. Larry. And Foles. By yes, to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number forty-six, two thousand sixteen, and ordinance permitting the city of North Canton to accept certain sanctuary laws as collateral for a performance bond in the amount of ninety-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars and a maintenance bond in the amount of one hundred three thousand seven hundred six dollars between the city and the County Development Corporation for the sanctuary number three construction project, and the claim the same to be in emergency.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Yeah, Tim, I assume everything's okay with these contracts, Jim, everybody's happy with the bonds. It's presenting, that's no question. I'm motion wait out.
Second.
Keesley. Peters. Larry. Foles. Fontaine. By yes, to adopt the first reading of ordinance number forty-six, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number forty-six dash sixteen? Second.
Peters. Larry. Foles.
Who's it? Yes.
Fontaine. And Keesley. By yes, to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number forty-six, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of rules, ordinance number forty-six dash sixty?
So move. Second.
Larry. Foles. Fontaine. Keesley. And Peters. By yes, to adopt and the suspension of rules for ordinance number forty-six, two thousand sixteen.
All righty. Reports, member Fontaine.
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on Mr. Tripp's comments. Larry, you know, freedom of speech is a wonderful thing, right? That's why we're here. We all get to voice our opinions how we'd like to. But, you know, it's just like a beekeeper. You can beat the bees out with a stick or smoke them out. And with freedom of speech, I just think it's important to always use, you know, to be, I like Jeff, but Jeff's a great guy. Matter of fact, you were his paper boy one time, I think, probably.
I think I was.
Yeah, but anyhow, Jeff's a great guy. So I just think, you know, it's like anything, we always have a matter of opinions, but it's just, I always say, it's always better to be more polite about it instead of, you know, slash people with a stick, hit them with a stick. That's just my opinion. So I'm just saying, you know, we could still get our word across, we could be respectful and disagree that we have different opinions, which is great about the American way that the freedom fighters gave us. As far as Ron and Judy go, I can concur with what you're saying. You're right, Glenwood, you know, they have Wednesday night, wing night down at the place there.
Wednesday is your first one?
Yeah, so Wednesday is, where's the wing?
Wednesday is Sunday.
Okay, so Wednesday and Sunday is bike night, right across the Hoffman Bridge, you go, you get wings in Quaker State Loop. And, you know, it's just like anything, you see, you know, no engine brake for semis in residential areas. It's like, you know, motorcycles, you can still drive nice and smooth down the road, but it just, it's, it's the goose a little bit, it makes that big clumpy sound, and I think that they should just be more respectful or move it to Apple Grove.
And so on.
Cleveland Avenue to Apple Grove.
And so on.
So that would be my opinion on how to solve the problem. And yes, they do blow through that stop sign as well as the one on Fair Oaks. I mean, we sit there, because I live right there, too. So I know exactly what you're saying, and we'll have to look into that a little bit as well. But good comments, that's all.
Thank you. Member Grant.
Ron, thanks for coming up. I love your people's suggestions, just like Doug like. We are not experts on everything, and we are just like you, we are a citizen doing this job. So I appreciate that. Even Doug saying maybe at Hopkien, we'll get the CRA again another time, who knows? But maybe it would have been an idea that we hadn't thought of. So we appreciate that very much for that. We, this is my word of working with Eric. We have probably six or seven different properties we're kind of working on and looking into with the inspector, and it just, Inspector, he's limited his time, he's a business officer, and we're working on it, but most of the things in life before don't really could. Really, please caught back a paddle the other week, then within a couple days it was filled, and some citizens see a paddle, you know, attack us, and we're out of that.
Eric Key.
I have a report for my committee, but I've read papers tonight that Sue in, or the Wecklers' home is a, was built as an old farmhouse on Portage, and they're having an open house fundraiser for the Heritage Society Friday, June twenty-fifth, I think I have a paper said, if they take donations, it's thirty-five dollars a person, and they're gonna have some drinks, which you get to go through their farmhouse and try and raise money, and, you know, they just split like down the road on Portage.
That's a long time.
So look for it in paper, that's what we need. They're great people.
Thank you. I've had, I've had pleasure reading Gary.
Oh, here's, maybe he was a former councilman.
Former, former Lord of the Council for me, it's okay. Okay, good. This is, this is, this is, and he's done, he's not here. But he's done a wonderful job with that house and spent a lot of money out. He continues to make improvements every year, and God bless him and his wife for going at it. Really, that's what we're, what we're for. So if you get a chance to go through it, he's done some work. There's a lot of history there, right, history there.
done some work. There's a lot of history there, right? History there. Surely be more than to explain it too. So it's a nice, nice thing to hear. Also, um, I, I just echo Doug Wayne's comments. I've said this on the floor. Um, you know, council members here have had a rigorous, respectful debate. I think we have. And I appreciate that with this council. You know, we're always gonna have differences of opinions, but I think I was in no way felt that anybody, when we discussed it without a comment or anything, would respect each other and, you know, we were passionate about our, our beliefs and our decisions. So that's a good thing. I think just for the general public to understand, when you run a meeting, when you're Jeff Schuh, as, as resident council, we run a neighborhood meeting, those are tough things to do sometimes because there's passion from the residents. And sometimes you gotta watch with that because it becomes very emotional and almost becomes personal. I think we should all take a step back and just review that. I think, um, Jeff's doing a great job as council president. Those are not, uh, you know, easy shoes to wear sometimes, especially when you know that people aren't gonna be happy with some decisions you're gonna make. So just, you know, I think we're a great community. I think we need to represent our greatness in, in any meeting we attend, whether it's a neighborhood meeting or gathering, uh, discussion, uh, and the deros that, I mean, we've all been there. That's what we do as council members. Um, somebody to talk to, someone to really just listen and listen and, and, and hear the, hear the passion in people's voices and the, the emotion and the, and being upset. And we do the best we can to speak for an entire council here. And I think that's what's rewarding when we can move the city in a positive direction. That's why I continue to run for council. I'm trying to make improvements in the city. I'm passionate about where I live. So is everybody out there. They wanna run for council. That's the bottom line. And thanks for the vendors, of the, uh, the audience that come here on a regular basis because you're passionate too. If you care about your city. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna just gloss over it. I just wanna say the things that need to be said. And I think we all deserve to respect the residents, people come up publicly speaking vice versa. It makes for a better meeting. It makes for a more campaign, that's what we're about. I think we're a great community because of that. So let's all strive to do that in the future. As far as, uh, the CRA, I'm very happy to go back to drawing board. Um, I've been more or less in favor of just looking at the residential end of this. And I think we'll get it right. I think we'll discuss it and, and hopefully bring it back. And, and we made comments here that we're gonna review it in a couple, every few years. So I think that's the key to anything. Things evolve. Things change. When you get locked down in the contracts, I've seen it for other communities, when you get locked down in the fifty-year agreements or ninety-nine-year agreements, those are not good things because you cannot forecast what's going to happen. So you're better to always bring it back and review it and, and try to work to the betterment of our schools, our residents, our neighborhoods. That's what this is about. And I think we've had a great discussion on this and hopefully we'll bring it back at some point and then continue to have discussion on it in the form. That's what, that's what the city government's about. Um, the last thing, Ninety-twenty-two forty should step in about it. I'd like to really see where we're at. I talked to Tim Fox and Eric Folds. We've been out there plenty of times and I know it's a difficult situation. If I could wave imagine one and someone just buy it and renovate it, I think that'd be a home right for the community. But it is getting tiresome and I'm not blaming anybody here, but just continuing to see the garbage can out all week, the high grass, the painting and these stuff. And I know letters have been sent out recently. I'd just like to talk to Eric and Tim a lot a little later at the meeting to see where we're at on that because it does get aggravating. And I hear about it all the time. I hear about it when my wife walks or not in the, with the war with some of the, the other residents. And, uh, and it's frustrating. And I'm not trying to, um, blame anybody about why it's not happening. I just think hopefully we're, we're doing everything we can. We're studying very aggressive weather because, you know, it seems to be a game with that, that on there. Even the residents don't care about regular trash can. And, you know, it just sits out there all, all day, all week. And it just tiresome. You see, you see Gary with his beautiful house. And ten houses down the road, we're dealing with a runoff that's been nothing but a problem. And we don't, I don't even live next to it. I can't imagine the residents there in any lane. They have to look out their way every night and look at it. It's just, it's just frustrating. So we gotta have, have a meeting, let's discuss that, see what else, uh, we gotta go with that. Thank you for allowing me to point out this. It's a great thing for the kind words. Uh, Ron, Judy, I, I think we can have, uh, we can address this. I know you say this goes to Chief Wilder. I think maybe we can all have a conversation with them and, and increase our presence there, especially in high traffic times. And certainly , uh, on Wednesdays, when they have the bike night down there. And I think there's, there's a few other restaurants down there that have bike nights as well. So it could be Tuesdays, Thursdays as well. I'm not sure exactly what, what the dates are, but I've come up and down that road and I've seen a bunch of bikes. I have one as well. And I don't make that type of noise. Um, and to Doug's comments, you know, um, the discourse that has been going on in this council chamber is for a long time. You know, he grows very tiresome because it's, it is adversary and, and we're all on the same team here. You know, the, the folks, you know, that, that come up here and criticize this council, we appreciate that, are mostly the older folks in this room where their kids, I grad, I graduated, but I was friends with. And now I have kids in school and, and I'm in the same mindset that you guys were thirty years ago. We care about this community. I want this community to be, uh, strong and vibrant long after I'm gone when my kids are raising their kids here. So we all want the same thing as you do. Uh, figures debate, uh, is healthy. I mean, I, and maybe that's, you know, I remember when I was a kid, my mom, we, she told this guy, I'd say I was a freak, you know, I'd argue all day and think I was right. And she said I should, no offense, she said I should have been a lawyer because I loved arguing so much. And, and I just, I, I love the debate. It's, it's really as simple as that. It's not personal. Maybe, maybe some folks in the, in the audience took it as personal. Um, maybe my debate tactics were a little, a little too strong. I'll back off if that's what it takes. I have no problem with that. But, but good, uh, strong debate gets you to where you wanna be. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Director Block, reports.
Could not improve on, uh, Folds's comments so far. Just say that I certainly stand behind them and rest of Peter's comments as well. Um, so I can simply say I support each of them and their comments. And just for those that may not be part of the conversation afterwards regarding the, the difficult property that we have on Portage and some of the reasons that have delayed what we're permitted to do with it is that twice since that property was reported to a nuisance officer, it's been in foreclosure. And we know that once a property is in foreclosure, there's a practical aspect. And that's involved with that where you're trying to compel a homeowner who's in the throes of persecution or, or losing that property. And the, the last thing that they tend to think of is, should I invest more money in approving? And that's what we're asking for you to do. Of course, the law going, that, um, should be resolved each time it is over the eight-inch prohibition. And with that, what, what we do is we first provide, we have to provide notice in favor of them by notice the first time they exceed. We give them opportunity to resolve it. If they don't resolve it, it's either that a city worker or a contract worker will do the, the mowing. And by law, we're permitted then to apply that to their, uh, property card with the auditor. And so when that property changes hands or is included in their, their taxes. So that amount that we pay is assessed. And each time we have to go back, that is, is increased. And it, it's not the usual case for someone to purchase their way out of foreclosure. Because often what happens to get out of the foreclosure in most cases is that they have to enter into a new agreement in addition to the mortgage. And they generally will agree in this new payment plan to pay back all of the fees that beg incur in that foreclosure action, including the grace of the property, significantly the attorney's fees to, to, to bring the action, the title search and all of those things. This is a significant amount of money that you normally see for someone that has equity in property in which to save it. That doesn't appear to be the case with this property, yet the person bought their way out of their foreclosure. So as soon as it was completed with the, um, the foreclosure was dismissed, we reinitiated their contact and their demands to complete the property and allow people to see foreclosure again. And they went through the same process again, notably the owner, lives in California. And I tracked down the owner and saw that they lived at an address that said, a building number in apartment two. And so I was thinking, for some reason, this person is still holding on and perhaps this is an investment property. I did a little more research on the building when the person was in apartment two, owns the building. So he's clearly an investor. So we are, again, have reinitiated our, our process. We have to give them an opportunity to respond. They, they've been past that, that period. So the next proceeding with us is to try to remedy this to our mirrors or, or go through the prom, uh, prosecutor's office in the county municipal court to have this enforced. So that's what we're at with that one. And another property that's, that's nearby, those are the two that were there on Portage.
Jane Soya, very good. Director Graham.
Uh, to our listeners' permission, I'd see the minute back to Councilman Folds about your upcoming meeting this week.
Oh, yeah, I have a meeting.
Yeah, I have a public meeting at Civic Center. It's really for the residents of the lawn of Portage. But, uh, we're gonna discuss some engineering options with Portage Board. I'm quite excited about it. As we know, I think it's a gateway into the city and, um, we hope to do some streetscaping and, um, new sidewalks. Uh, I think it'll invigorate the rest of the residents there or rentals, hopefully, to make a nice appealing street. And, uh, you know, you come into the city, you come in from North and South Main or East Main, those are gateways with those of Portage, I'm seventy-seven, obviously. So I'm looking for some good things and some input from some of the residents. Could be quite exciting in, oh, Portage and Charlotte. And I think it'll really, uh, just invigorate this whole area here on City Hall and, uh, west to, um, to Pittsburgh or to the, you know, anyway. So hopefully we'll go out with, what was that? Wednesday at six o'clock with the Civic Center. But I've looked at a few of the options. I think they're very nice and exciting. Something we haven't done in the city before. So hopefully, um, I'll hear what the residents have to say. And Jim will be there also, I'm sure, Jim.
Or Willie.
And just, maybe you're gonna bring it up in a full update if you can. I know maybe you're ready for it. Maybe, maybe somebody.
Yes. I'll start backwards a minute. If, uh, on the garbage contract, everybody, uh, on our survey, there was a high, uh, feedback that they liked our current garbage contract the way it was, the cans and, uh, pick up and recycle and all that. But if there's something that you don't like or you wanna see more out of, uh, council or the citizens, can shoot me an email or give me a phone call. Let me know. I'm, uh, putting this, uh, contract together to put out. But I'm thinking that it might be about the same thing because that's what the people like. So that's, that's pretty much what I'd like to go after. We thought we did it. Uh, Mr. Jeskey and I apparently are these two of the people that own manufacturing equipment on our motorcycles. So I understand, uh, how some folks get that pretty noisy down there. I know in the past, uh, when I was chief, I looked at some decibel and we had some issues there, but maybe they come a lot further down the road on the board and that. I can, they use them down around rural region and so I'll speak to the chief and lieutenant about something that we can do along those lines. Besides, doing more toward down there, we'll try to do something that way. Cause you are getting a lot more bikes in there, like they mentioned, because of, that's bike night and that's the way they go down. And they'll usually try to stay off Babel Street. So there's nobody wants to be twenty here, twenty-five down there. So, uh, Mr. Wayne left, but I just, and I don't see him, obviously, I don't wanna tell him that. But publicly, I just appreciate him being on the housing committee because it's not a very sexy committee or anything like that. We need it in weird times. But, uh, he always is, is there. He always asks good questions and, and concerns and that. And, uh, Eric always gives us up to take photos and everything else. But it's, uh, he's really served well on that, you know, quite, quite a while. I just, I know it's exciting here. So I would appreciate it. Doug giving up his time for that. Uh, the other is the, uh, uh, pool. I know the mayor wants to come to the pool. Uh, I know if I'm at the pool and I turn around quickly, I run into the mayor. The mayor's, I ain't no living there. So he always seems to be there. But, uh, we are concerned obviously about safety, as Mr. Tripp said. Uh, you know, my grandchild will probably go to the pool. So it's, if I'm in safety on my life, that pool's gonna be safe. And when you got water and electricity, it's gonna be safe. We're gonna do that. We'll be open it up. We did not make the time opening up in Memorial Day. There's a lot of moving parts to this, a lot of different people inspecting it. But as a city administrator, I apologize to everybody for not getting it open a long time, but that's my responsibility and we just did not get it done. But we're not gonna open it until it's ready to be opened. So our electric has been inspected and has passed the inspection. I do have the, uh, inspection permits and, you know, that, that works good. We're chasing a leak. Mayor couldn't afford in on the leak, but that's what we've been doing, uh, the last few days too. So thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Yes, uh, and again, uh, just to reiterate with my prime, so as far as the pool, you know, on our end, um, we, we've had a number of people, obviously with my family, Peter's family and all the customers as well as all of the pool. But, you know, number, or number one priority of the city is safety. And again, when you have the electricity and you have the pool, there is, there is no room for, uh, absolute perfection of this. And so I'm, I'm really appreciative of our permits department, uh, directed by Eric Folds and our electrical inspector and our, uh, chief building inspector, Rio Alvarez, and Adam Walker. Uh, they would not allow the permit for the electrical inspection, um, to be approved until there was, uh, the grounding requirements for that. We had Hillshire Clark that came out and they, this was on Friday before Memorial Day weekend, and they tested the grounding and it did not pass. Uh, so, uh, we, we had to go in there and have an assessment. We had, uh, Bob Horn, who was an electrical engineering specialist. We contacted him. He did a full assessment, uh, the following week and, uh, and made sure that all of the grounding requirements were met. The good thing is, once the pool is open, this pool will be safer than the previous, uh, pool because of the best available technology that's made out of. All of the, the pool, uh, components now, there's no metal piping, there's no metal drains, there's, it's all PVC, plastic. So it, uh, that does not act as the same conduction of electricity as, uh, as the previous pool did. Uh, there were wiring issues that we had to have addressed because essentially we have a brand-new, higher volume pump that is much more effective. But, you know, we were putting it, inserting that electrical pump into, uh, uh, electric lines that were, that was built in nineteen-seventy-three. So there was adjustments that had to be made. The good thing is, we did have the electrical inspection, uh, was recently passed. There is, um, we have a leak detection company out there because we are having more water loss than what we should be having. Uh, we're somewhat accustomed to that because we deal with that in our water system. Uh, we plan to have to have it addressed, uh, tonight, uh, as we speak. And then we'll have the, the permit that we hope to have issued here very soon, but I don't want to do the specific day. We wanna open it, uh, very, very soon. Uh, you know, we're expecting this week. And then, um, as far as, uh, so I hope that addresses all the questions. We do appreciate everybody's patience, particularly Ben Wheeler from the YNCA and also Dee from the YNCA. They've done a fantastic job. They've been out there every day and working with us. We greatly appreciate, uh, their support as well. Uh, we also have, uh, our police and fire, another known police and fire department. Our police officers on Thursday night, they captured that man that was making the threats to, uh, go and shoot up people in the city of Canton. They had three people with firearms and other weapons on them. And our police officers were right there after they got the tip and they caught him. So, um, we believe that there was a shooting. It was a murder, which is really unbelievable. Uh, great news. Great job of these officers. Then, uh, the fire department, the accident we had a few weeks ago where the, uh, uh, the young man and young woman that were on the motorcycle and sadly, the young male was killed as the motor vehicle was driven by a young lady, a sixteen-year-old. Uh, she struck the motorcycle and, uh, killed the young man and the young lady was trapped underneath, pinned under the car. And, uh, just to give you, uh, when you look at our fire department, from the time the nine-one-one call came in, they had, uh, they were out there and had the car off of the young lady in eight minutes. That includes the travel time of the fire department, uh, to the scene and then putting, strategically placing the airbags underneath the vehicle to make sure that they're lifting the car in such a way that they're not going to do additional harm, um, to the young lady that was pinned under there. So a very, uh, just a very tragic and traumatic experience for all the people who were involved. That's our, uh, certainly the victims and, and also for our, uh, fire, and that's our police department. So, I mean, I'm just so grateful that we have dedicated people at that, for these kinds of things. And that's why I think we see such. And that's why we see such excellent performance. And then also for our residents, we have, we do appreciate, I certainly appreciate, and all the customers do, your input that you give, because it does make a difference. The CRA was a perfect example. There was, with good intentions, wanting to move the CRA in one direction, but then for every good intention that you have, you recognize that there's unintended consequences. And I think that the unintended consequences came to light at the public meeting. Also at the meeting that we had here in this chamber, but also at the Dogwood Pool meeting. And I know Melanie was very, is always very helpful, giving me, you know, advice as far as things that should be done, or ways that we should, you know, respond. And normally, I don't say as much that these chamber meetings, because this is a council meeting, but then I thought I'd make up for it at the Dogwood meeting. And afterwards, she told me I talked too long, too much on that one. So I try to gauge things, you know, and I do sometimes talk a little more if I get nervous. So I was a little nervous at that meeting, because that was a rough one. And Ron, you gave very, very strong opinions on that meeting, as did Larry and Judy. You said that I did not call on you sooner, and I do apologize, that you will be the first one to call on next week. And but the thing is, is that Ron, even at the end of the meeting, he gave me a hug, so that was nice. And Jeff Peters, even though we've had our strong opinions back and forth, he still let his daughter stay overnight with my daughter there this past weekend. So I think that we're still on decent terms after that, right? So we appreciate that. But we do appreciate the input that you folks give, and we're gonna have more information this evening, so hopefully we can give it to our reporter, Jessica, this evening. So thanks, and everybody, we appreciate it.
Engineer, the mayor's taking up all your time.
He did. Did we pass those to the law clerk, or GS and G?
No, we just, he's done.
Just projects are starting, continuing on Heatherwood, the water lines proceeding there. Over inside, we're at that, it's pretty good. We're starting on Style Way here, probably out of the 4th of July. Those are the largest projects we have. Price Park Culver project, we did some of those last week. The original legislation for that was in 2013. We've increased allocation for that this year, so we need to go to bend down a little bit, and that'll be coming to use, a committee meeting next week, we'll be able to discuss that then. Prices came in well, over 100 budget, and we're forward to seeing what that looks like.
Is when we look at a favor, like Woodrow on 7th Street, or just on the other?
We haven't, we've awarded that contract, but we haven't set down the contract or set up the schedule yet. I'll try and get that for you this council meeting.
Thanks.
We got some S R B attached jobs, a little bit of scanning there.
They'll be part of the resources that we're looking for this year.
Okay, all set? All right, I need to, we need to address the schedule here for next. Here will be a new camera. Need a motion for a second to move the committee meeting, next week's committee meeting, the 20th to the 27th, from after the council meeting. There a second?
Took it first meeting, the 5th or 6th.
Like that, emergency.
We'll talk, we can add a motion.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Please, yes, Peters.
Yes.
And Mary, yes. By the way, move the committee meeting to the 27th.
All right, so next Monday, there's no meeting, next committee meeting, we move to the 27th, following the regular council meeting. With that, entertaining motion to here. Move.
Second.
There's that, most safe side.
Four years and nine months. Good for you.
Amy, thanks to you, the R B trust. If you can't, then it's not a good thing, it's a bad thing. You're a good guy, just don't, yeah, I know. All right, you see how I am, steady and.
Oh, is that your wife? Oh, I didn't know who that was. She's my fair woman, you are.
Ah, hey. Hey, I'm a good-looking man. That's my wife, Julie.
Thank you, nice to meet you, man.